Ready? All right. Welcome, everyone. Work session for the Pecoson City Council. This is a work session dated May 26th. In tonight's work session, we're here to basically follow the same protocol on most of development plans where we have a work session to kind of get the background on it, to understand what's been done so far, and then talk about the path going forward. So really, without further ado, Randy, how would you like to proceed through this as far as a direction to council? I think we were going to start with the developer themselves, right?
It may be helpful to ask Mrs. Vest, to just give us a minute or two about, from an application standpoint, what is this application? There are two. She'll highlight those and then afford the opportunity for the developer and his team to present their proposal to you. And then what I would suggest is following that, that Mrs. Vest or Kevin be provided an opportunity to summarize for you the Planning Commission's public hearing and deliberations from last week.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. Since early April, city staff has been processing two land use applications submitted by the Big Woods Development Company for approval of a master plan of development for a new planned unit development, development, excuse me, in the Big Woods area of the city. This particular development is presented to you as a form of requesting to activate the planned unit development overlay district that was created back in the fall of 2013 by City Council as a means of providing a new development opportunity which offers flexibility but in a unified form for the area of the city known as the Big Woods. As you all know, the Big Woods is comprised of several independently platted parcels. And until the overlay district was created, it did not offer opportunity for a unified form. And independent development is extremely difficult in this area simply because of the constraints from a public road access as well as public utility access. So therefore, the district was created. The district itself is governed by two articles of the city zoning ordinance, which is Article 8.2 and 8.4. Those particular articles actually map out the exact application, submittal, review, and approval process, as well as establishing the design criteria. In order to continue with the thought of having flexible development, there's a couple of mechanisms that's included in those districts or in the district that afford City Council some opportunity to expand the district and to waive some of the design criteria, provided that those two elements are presented as a part of the master plan of development, which must be considered during the public hearing process. With that said, the master plan for the legacy does include two components that requires your consideration. The first of which is a land use map amendment to incorporate the area shown in gold on this slide, which is the southern 22 acres of the property, into the balance of the Big Woods area, which is presently eligible for use or activation of the overlay district. The 22 acre shaded in gold is located on the south side of Oxford Run and is presently designated by the city's future land use map for low-density residential, which allows a lot yield of up to two units per acre. If the designation, if the land use designation is changed to allow for incorporation into the legacy project, the actual lot density could increase up to 12 units. However, the legacy project is only proposing six units, so it's half. This application requires a separate public hearing, which must precede the master plan approval application, which is the actual request to activate the overlay district. The master plan application itself has, is a very comprehensive package, which includes a series of maps, which is a survey map of the entire area, as well as a conceptual plan and a series of impact analysis. Included in that application, a couple of things that I wanted to point out, and then I'll close. But there's a provision in the application for requests for waivers to three design criteria. They too require separate approval, but they're actually a part of the conceptual plan that you will be reviewing later this evening. The first waiver is from the accessory building setback requirements. Currently, the district requires between a seven-and-a-half to 15-foot setback, depending on the height of the structure. However, the legacy development team is requesting to reduce that setback to five feet due to the smaller lot size of the residential areas within this district compared to other areas throughout the city. The second request is a reduction of the front yard setback along Victory Boulevard. Currently, the ordinance requires that you observe the underlying district, which in this area is the R&amp;D district, which requires a 60-foot setback, building setback. However, the developer is requesting to reduce that setback to 25 feet in exchange for an enhanced either natural or planted landscape strip. And then the third application, waiver application, includes a requirement about the 40-foot perimeter buffer. The overlay district requires a 40-foot perimeter buffer around any area adjacent to the exterior perimeter of the district, which is currently developed with a use approved by the underlying district. However, the applicants are requesting to reduce that setback or to exchange the required landscape buffer from landscaping or natural vegetation to yards, to residential lots. This is on, in two areas, the area adjacent to the City Hall Avenue, City Hall Building, and then the area adjacent to the southwestern part of the site, as it lies adjacent to existing residential development in the Woods of Tab subdivision. And that basically gives you an overview of the application itself.
Any questions for Debbie before we move to the next part?
I have one question about the five-foot setback request. Does that include the sidewalks? Because don't we have a sidewalk ordinance now where that will have to include sidewalks?
The five-foot setback is only pertaining to accessory buildings, which will be located in the rear yard of the residential units.
Not the front?
Not the front.
Not the front, no, ma'am.
Okay. Anything else? All right. How would you like to proceed? Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Good evening, Mr. Wheeler, staff. My name is Lamont Myers. I'm a manager of the Big Woods Development Company. I'll be introducing the members of our team, and we'll talk briefly and then be available to answer as many questions as you may have. Just to, even though most of you know everyone here, Buddy Spencer is the CEO of the Mid-Atlantic Companies, and he's also manager of Big Woods Development Company. Buddy is here this evening. Donald Davis, our project engineer. Davis and Associates to my right. Brandon Curranz with Brandon Curranz Architects, who is our architect and land planner. Tom Johnston with the Franklin Johnston Group, who will be the apartment developers. We also have with us Ted Figuera, Ted Figuera Consulting, who has done the fiscal impact analysis. And is Chris here? There's Chris in the back. Chris Lawrence is with AECom, who is formerly URS, which has done the traffic study. So we have, and I believe Julie Steele is back there as well, with Environmental Specialties Group, and Julie is our environmental consultant. So we have the entire team here this evening to answer questions as they might come up. I would like to just start off by saying, this project, even to get to this point, would not have been possible without the leadership of the city. I mean, you, the council, by inviting the property owners in and the staff, Mr. Wheeler, having the property owners of the Big Woods come in and meet really together for the first time, really allowed us to, a vehicle to begin to reach out to everyone. And I think that the fact that the ordinance that was developed, was developed in such a way that it really attempted to provide opportunities for all of the property owners. I mean, the Big Woods, as you know, there's disparate ownership. There are a lot of different property owners. There are a lot of different heirs in some instances. Some of the properties are landlocked. Some of the properties are more heavily impacted by wetlands than others. And I think the ordinance and the way it's been handled with to give everyone an opportunity to share in this has been a tremendous benefit, because it really, as opposed to creating winners and losers, it's really an opportunity, I think, for everyone, all of the property owners, many of whom are here this evening, to be winners in this process. So I just would like to thank you all for that leadership. We, I'd like to start off by saying, I mean, you know, we really view this as a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to bring a community to Pecoson that really, a master plan, new community that really will be unlike anything that's been developed in the city. Before I call on the other team members, and what I will do briefly is that Donald will talk about the existing conditions on the site. Brandon will talk about the site design. Tom will talk about the apartment community in terms of the amenities and the level of the, the level that they're planning on developing. And then, of course, everyone else here, while not necessarily having a presentation, will be available for questions. But I would like to, before I go into that, address some of the issues that came up at the Planning Commission, just to kind of put those, put those on the table. The first was the setback from Victory Boulevard, and Debbie mentioned that. We're requesting a building setback from Victory Boulevard of 25 feet. If, you don't see this on the aerial photograph, but we're showing a right-of-way, and Donald, correct me if I'm wrong, a right-of-way on Victory Boulevard of about 140 feet is the right-of-way now on Victory. The property line for legacy is about 80 feet from the nearest, from the nearest travel lane. So you have a tremendous amount of woods already there before you even get to the property line. And then the adjacent, then there would be a 25-foot building setback that, as Debbie mentioned, would be enhanced with additional landscaping. That area is very critical to us, being able to, to be able to use that land for the apartment site. The apartments are a very critical part of this component, making this work financially. And we need to get as close to 200 units as possible, because that is a critical number that allows, that allows onsite staffing, that allows the developer, and again, Tom, I don't want to steal any of your thunder here, but it allows them to be able to build the amenities, the level of amenities that we really believe this project deserves. So in any event, we selected 25 feet, because there is, in consultation with staff, there is a provision in the zoning ordinance that it does allow for a 25-foot greenbelt buffer along Victory Boulevard. And by doing this and having, bringing the buildings forward, it eliminates having a sea of parking up front. You're actually seeing very attractive buildings that would be through the trees. And again, remember, you'll be about 80 feet, the motoring public will be 80 feet from the property line, so a little over 100 feet to the nearest building. With regard to the modifications of the buffers along the existing property, property lines, and let's see, I don't know if you'll be able to, I guess we can see this. If you look at, if you look at the way legacy has been laid out, we really don't adjoin too much in the way of developed property at all. Victory Boulevard, of course, you've got, we do adjoin the back parking lot here at City Hall, and we do adjoin undeveloped property here. And what we have done in this instance is that we have provided for the white property, we have provided road and stub outs for road and future utility connections in case the owner of that decides that he would like to develop that property at some point. We're making that as easy as possible to do. All of this property along this part of York County would be our wetland system, ecosystem. And then along the Woods of Tab area, these lots are our largest, our deepest single-family lots in the entire community. So we really are putting the deepest single-family lots in this area. The other thing I'd like to very point out, and that is adjacent, we took great pains as to what to do with this triangle here that sits next to Hunt Woods, between Hunt Woods and Woods of Tab. And rather than try to put housing units in there, we felt that the best way to be good neighbors was to make this green space. And what we've done is we've created a park and neighborhood garden plots. So all of this area back in here, between Hunt Woods and Woods of Tab, will be green space. So we've taken, again, great pains to try to do that in such a way that our existing neighbors will really, in this case, not, really not even know we're there. So I think that's, that's critical. Another question that always comes up, whenever, anytime you talk about this area, is of course drainage. And we're very cognizant of that. We understand and we realize the importance of Oxford Run in the city's overall drainage structure. So we, again, have taken great care to not impact Oxford Run. All of our storm water will be handled onsite. It'll be through, you see a series of ponds. Now, this will all have to be engineered, but there will be a combination of ponds. You've got a tremendous amount of open space, of wooded area here. And Donald can speak to this a little better than I can, not being an engineer. But just to point out that we are designing this in such a way that the only discharge into Oxford Run will be at or below pre-development rates. So we're not, not using Oxford Run itself for any of our storm water. We're handling that onsite. And Donald, if you care to elaborate on that, please do. And then the next issue is, of course, is the issue of Victory Boulevard and traffic and what this may mean for the future of Victory Boulevard. Chris, our traffic consultant, is here this evening. He's been requested to do an update to our traffic study that will show, which we originally did not have in the traffic study, this future connection to City Hall Avenue, right here, that would come out to the circle. And he's also, will be eliminating what originally was proposed, which was a connection to Champion's Path in the Woods of Tab area. We have eliminated that at the request of our neighbors. So the traffic study is being revised, some slight revisions, and we're, that's going to VDOT, and I think Chris said that'll be finished here next week, those minor revisions. That'll give VDOT a chance to review that and comment before this comes to you, the council, for a public hearing. All that having been said, we don't know at this point what our ultimate build-out will be in terms of how many of these units we will actually achieve. There are always issues that are involved. You know, we, you know, one of the things we're doing, of course, we have our wetland mitigation plan, and we have our stormwater plan. So those things may impact, may impact unit counts. The unit counts that you see on the plan are maximums. Those are the maximum that we're requesting. We certainly hope we can get close to that, but we're not sure. But however, that having been said, we, the development team, are prepared to make, you know, to come forward with a financial contribution to the city, if and when it's warranted, for our, really, our proportional share of the impact on Victory Boulevard. If in the future, you know, it's determined that a signal is needed or some other improvements are needed, we're prepared to make a financial contribution to basically defray our share of the cost in terms of the impact. So in summary, before I turn it over to Donald, I just would like to point out, there's a few things that we think, there are many positive attributes that I think will come through in this process. This will create a range of new housing types in the city that'll appeal to a wide range of buyers, including empty nesters, young professionals, singles, and families. We're trying to create a community that is available to a wide range, a wide range of product types, a wide range of buyers, that will be done in such a way that the quality and the price point of the homes will be very consistent with everything surrounding, you know, in the surrounding area. It'll return, and Ted, again, Ted Figuera is here, and he can speak to this, but it'll return about $32 million in local tax revenues over a 15-year period, while generating, or requiring less than half of that in public, in net public service cost. It'll provide new commercial opportunities to the city with having pad-ready sites for up to 40,000 square feet of new commercial. It'll provide new schoolchildren for a system that's experienced declining enrollment. It'll use, we think, a very creative approach by taking these little scattered wetlands that sort of exist throughout the site and filling in the larger wetland area, filling in with the upland areas and creating wetlands. We will take a, a less than, less than optimum wetland system and create an integrated wetland system of about 27 acres in this area that will have, not only provide a tremendous buffer, it'll provide an opportunity for stormwater management, to be able to, for some groundwater recharge. And it also can provide an opportunity for wildlife habitat and even for educational opportunities. We have provided, as I mentioned, future interconnectivity. We think at some point, as other properties are developed in the surrounding areas, we can certainly see a connection going to With Creek Road, and we try to make provision for that, recognizing that we don't own that property. So what we've done is, is provide a connections, ability to connect wherever we can, so that in time, as the rest of this property develops, it'll develop in a fashion where it's all interconnected from a traffic planning standpoint. I mentioned the buffers and how we're trying very hard to work with our neighbors and be able to put our, our largest lots and park areas adjacent to the existing neighbors. And we're doing all this, as Debbie mentioned, by keeping our residential density at less than half of what's allowed by the ordinance. So that having been said, I probably talked too long. I'm going to turn it over to Donald Davis, and he'll talk about the existing conditions on the site.
Turn the lights on, please. Thank you. My name is Donald Davis. I'm a land surveyor with Davis and Associates. We're located at 3630 George Washington Memorial Highway in Yorktown. I've been there for about 35 years now. I'd like to talk to you tonight about the development and how we're going to at least take a look at how this property is where it is today, how, under existing conditions, how we propose to move forward with having an integrated development here. First of all, let me give you a little background data on this piece of property. It's a little over 100 acres that exist with the various parcels. And I'm going to try and not talk to you, but I'm going to try to at least talk to the map so I can show you what is going on here. The piece of property is located to the north, Victory Boulevard, 171. To the east, which would generally be some commercial business areas with City Hall and the library. To the east further would be some additional development that would be occurring in the future, could be residential, could be commercial also. To the south would generally be residential area. And to the west would be the area that we're proposing for wetlands within the development that we would be trying to either build or mitigate for. So the piece of property, as we're proposing it, has five general elements here. They range in type from, from single-family detached to cottages, to multifamily, to townhouses. And what we're proposing is to be able to have inner dispersed development within the, in the site. The property itself has a number of areas that I'd like to talk about. First of all, would be, one of the main things we talked about at the Planning Commission meeting last week was where the actual roadway for Route 171, Victory Boulevard, is located. That roadway, again, is located to the north side of the property. The right-of-way that exists there is 140 feet wide, but what we've developed since this time, and I have a copy if you need it, Debbie, if anyone wants it. What we have done is we provided where the actual locations of the existing land areas. Can I just pass this over to you so you can see it? There was some discussion about where the existing roadway is located on Victory Boulevard, and also how we'd be able to develop the property and be able to operate with inside the limits of where the right-of-ways are located. If you take a look at the sketch plan or the exhibit that we prepared there, we've got about six, I'm sorry, about 28 feet of roadway from the existing edge of where the pavement is located. Now, where we put the additional roadway, which would be the acceleration lanes on Victory Boulevard, we put those in an area which would be about 12 feet wide, and it would be generally based on where the existing drainage earth ditches are located. We proposed to pipe those areas through there so that the ditches would be removed. But if you take a look at it, we're still going to have somewhere in the neighborhood of about 17 to 18 feet of additional space from where the most southerly edge of where Victory Boulevard would be located. So we'll be reviewing that further as we go through the process here. Some of the things I would like to talk about, a wetland delineation, and Lamont touched on that. The wetland delineation has been confirmed by the Corps of Engineers. A permit has been applied for through various agencies, both local, state, and federal. The area that I'm referring to is located on the west side of the property, but as it exists in today's form, and that area, which is approximately 26 acres in size, we're proposing to take what are some small ditch wetland areas, and where some that are much larger as you move in a westerly direction, and be able to put that into more of an integrated rural wetland site here, where we would be able to have groundwater recharge, we'd be able to direct water, stormwater drainage into those areas, and really come up with something that is going to really look like a real wetland out here. And that's what we're working with the Corps, DEQ, other agencies currently. We think it's going to be a win-win for everyone. We think it's going to be something that's going to be unique in this area, and it, hopefully we'll see this move forward very quickly. Couple other things that I'd like to talk about is Oxford Run runs generally in the lower end of the property, which would be more towards the south, would be in the east-west direction, that it makes about a 90-degree turn and goes in a northerly direction. Approximately, approximately where the two points meet, or where the 90-degree angle would be located, at that point is approximately where the edge of the Resource Protection Area, the RPA, is located. And of course, the rest of the area within the development itself is an RMA. So we tried to design around that where possible. We're looking at what the standards are that deals with mandated standards from what is now DEQ, to be able to move forward with that development and how we're going to make it operate properly. Steep slopes. One of the things we have to look at on any piece of property today is if we have steep slopes. This, this piece of property generally, with the exception of the earth ditch that is adjacent to and part of Oxford Run, that does have some steep slopes. We won't be operating inside of those. The general areas that would be east and west of where the Oxford Run is located, those areas are approximately 1% flatter, I'm sorry, 1% or flatter than that. So we meet the requirements there. We don't come anywhere near approaching what would be 20%. Approximately about four or five months ago, the city, and your city council, of course, voted, and the new wetlands maps were adopted. We have an area here which is very small, less than 1% to 2%, which would be located in the upper right-hand, I'll call it the southeastern corner. The rest of the property is located in a Zone X, which doesn't typically require any type of impacts to FEMA flood maps. Topography in the site ranges from approximately seven foot of elevation, and that, again, would be somewhere about that easterly or southeastern area of the property. The rest of it ranges up to about 10 or greater in elevation. So generally, that area has some of the largest elevations of anywhere in Pecoson. We looked at hazardous materials, and we're not proposing any hazardous materials on this property. There are none that are planned within the development. Some of the other things we looked at were soils. It generally is a hydroxic soil, it's a botany soil in most of that area, which is very, is typically fits within this type of area in the eastern plains of Virginia. A couple of things I would like to touch on, though, and I won't take too long on this. Um, a couple of things I would like to touch on, though, and I won't take too long on this, is that one of the main issues here, it's a big, it's a big issue with everything that we deal with today with development, and that's stormwater management. One of the things that we're proposing here is, and we didn't try and, uh, adopt and be grandfathered with the 2009 stormwater management standards. What we did was, we went back and we looked at it, and we've done some soils testing since that time, which we're still looking at, but we're proposing to use the 2014 standards for this development. And basically, if I take a look through the big, big manual, basically what it says is, you keep your water to yourself. Um, and that's what we're proposing to do, beat those requirements. As Lamont said a short time ago, uh, we're proposing to develop a, uh, a site here, that stormwater management will not allow more runoff to leave the property than currently exists on the property. And one of the things that's more important today, when we take a look at this type of development, is that you must also control your velocity that comes off the property. We've never had to do that in the past. So, we're, we're excited about having, to be able to do that, and that's what we're working towards right now. Uh, we'll have to say that based on this, we'll be looking much closer as, as how we develop this piece of property, what the real stormwater management is. Again, a lot of the work has been done. We're still working, putting all the pieces to the puzzle together. Uh, a couple of things that I'll close, is that we've got city water at the site. Uh, we have a 16-inch water line that is located in an east-west direction on Victory Boulevard. Uh, we have city sewage, which is located at the northerly side of the site, uh, so that will be extended into the development itself, um, and we've checked those to make sure that they have the proper, um, capacity to be able to handle that. And fire protection also. We've looked at fire protection. We will be providing fire protection at the site, uh, within the development itself. So, I guess, having said that, uh, this is somewhat of a lead-in to Mr. Currents, who will be talking about really the development itself.
Thank you, Donald. Good evening. I'm Brandon Currents. I'm an architect, uh, in the area, and have, uh, had the privilege of, uh, working on, several, uh, what we call new urbanist or traditional neighborhood design developments in the area. Um, I wanna first thank y'all, and the city council, and mayor, and the staff, for the foresight in creating this, uh, mixed-use overlay that, that makes this type of, of development possible. I think it's the perfect place for it, in, in Pecosin, and, uh, just my hat's off to you for that. Um, we have design legacy of Pecosin using what we call the principles of traditional neighborhood development, or TND, is what we call it. And this is a similar, uh, design philosophy that the great, uh, cities and neighborhoods of the past have been, uh, have used. Charleston, Savannah, Baltimore, Philadelphia, and Boston, Washington DC, and then close-to-home Richmond, Williamsburg, Norfolk, Hampton, all use these principles. Um, now, the principles sort of got put by the wayside after World War II, but they've been resurrected by a lot of architects, uh, in, in recent years, in order to, uh, get the people and, and the quality of life back into neighborhoods. And what, uh, the, the newer term now is new urbanism. There's really nothing new about it, except we have cars, we have vehicles, and that's a major shift from traditional neighborhood design when it was horse and buggy. So, what we term as a major difference between TND and new urbanism is management of vehicles. However, the major similarity between the two is, uh, a primary focus on the design for people. That means designing for a sense of place. Cars don't care about their place. People feel it, they know it. It's innate to them, and we, we cater to that. We also design for the human scale and pedestrian streetscapes. This is, uh, means that, uh, things, the amenities, streetlights are a little closer together, closer to the ground. Um, we have comfortable walking paths, sidewalks, landscape, uh, strips. Uh, we make it comfortable to cross streets with people. All these are done, and they're called human scale. And it's to ensure that people are fully engaged in their community while cars are managed. And so, all the living functions that require an automobile trip are taken care of. Um, but the trend of putting the vehicle as number one priority in, 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 uh, design of subdivisions is replaced now with make, making sure that the people are our number one priority. Now, how do we do this? Um, I, architects have a hard time talking without a pencil or something in their hand, so I'm gonna try to, to, to use the laser. The first thing we do is create outdoor spaces that cultivate community. Outdoor spaces are what we term, between, we use buildings and houses as walls, sort of like what we have here. The important thing is what's between these walls. Similarly, in outdoor spaces, it's what goes on outside the walls of the homes that is, uh, great communities, really foster that area. So, one, first thing we do is we gather setbacks, the large setbacks from the, uh, that were established in the 50s, 60s. We try to get that land back, pull it, uh, together, and create community spaces with that. And that's, this, this has, uh, two, uh, great assets are, are done, are created this way. Number one, it puts neighbors in closer proximity to one another, so that they can get to know each other. They interact with each other, they enjoy each other. And therefore, they, it fosters conversations, they grow into friendships, they become neighborhoods of friends. You're not just waving as you're passing in the car, you actually know who the person is. Um, then we make streets walkable by narrowing the travel lanes and providing the, uh, at least a six-foot treed landscape along the streets, and then a sidewalk. And this is on both sides of the streets. Um, we take the street trees and streetlights, create a human scale to them. The trees that we prefer are ones that have a nice, uh, trunk to them with a canopy, maybe 10 feet up, that gives a colonated, protected area for walking. Uh, we promote parallel parking along the streets. Uh, this is for, uh, a couple of reasons. Number one is for safety on the street and off the street. It gives a little bit of protection between your front yard, your sidewalk, the landscape area, where people are, and, and the moving vehicles. Plus, when you start to cross the street, it gives you that one added layer of protection to look before you cross. Also, it creates a natural slowing device. People passing parked cars go slower than just on a wide, open, 30-foot stretch of pavement. Um, when we were doing, uh, Port Warwick, uh, we used these things and found that, you know, there's a, a speed limit there of 25 miles an hour, but you don't need a sign telling you that. Um, if you, generally, if you have to put up a sign, it's because it's easy to go 50 miles an hour. Well, it's just not easy. So, we use traffic calming devices that make it naturally slow. Um, we neck down the intersections. You'll see right in here, um, the, the parallel parking would be here. We have, uh, as you're coming in, we have a, a boulevard, and this is a wider area with a, a landscaped center section. But, when you get to the places where, um, thank you. And when, when you get to those, uh, uh, intersections, we, we neck them down so that, uh, it creates a shorter piece of pavement for the pedestrians to go across, and also makes it so that the, the parallel parking doesn't become a travel lane. Um, we create a cross-connected system of streets. Uh, as you can see, there's two ways to get to any property in here. This is a safety factor. Um, it also creates what we call ownership of blocks. So, if you live in this block and you're walking, you tend to walk around your own block. You see your own block. You get to know the neighbors in your own block. It's a safety. You know what's going on, on your block. Um, with the smaller front yards and the homes, uh, kept close to the road, we have a concept of what's called eyes on the street. You know what's going on, uh, on the cars that are coming by you. We use other, uh, traffic calming devices. Instead of signage, uh, intersections in them, within themselves tend to slow traffic. We have roundabouts. Roundabouts are a great way to keep people moving through, but at a pace that is more compatible with pedestrians. Uh, the other thing we do is we gather this land that, that we were talking about from all the setbacks, and we intersperse it into small pocket parks around the area. Not only, um, the pocket parks here, but then also gives us the opportunity for larger parks, and in this, uh, instance, the wetland, integrated wetland system. Now, I'll talk a minute about how we deal with homes and density. In this, uh, type of development, we're very careful on, uh, how and where we develop a full-spectrum housing. Full-spectrum means we try to get everybody in the community to have a place here. And we start, um, as, with the, uh, at the entrance, you have the highest density, and these are the apartments. As we come back into the community, we get a slightly less density, and do this with Then we have, um, some family buyers, which are the single-family homes, but this type are rear-loaded. We have alleyways. It caters to downsizers, uh, some first-time, uh, buyers that may not have families. Uh, it's also with the, um, garages in the rear, there's a safety factor there for the, uh, if, there's an older buyer, they usually like that, and it gives us the opportunity to put, uh, master bedroom down, um, that type of concept. Uh, it, it's a higher quality and a great streetscape. You take the cars and put them along, in the alley and in the garages, and it really makes these streetscapes beautiful for walking, which is the number one, uh, activity in, in America. Uh, so, instead of making pathways out there somewhere, they're all right out in front of your house. The other is, uh, um, we get here to slightly less dense than, than these, and this is for the family. These are front-loaded. So, all these homes have backyards, and that's where we envision, uh, children, which is safer, and so you have the eyes on the children from the back, uh, windows. Uh, the renters, uh, and this is a, what we call renter by choice. These are high-quality apartments. You don't just come out of college and have to rent. We have places that you can afford to buy. Um, but, a lot of people now don't want the ownership. They want the freedom to travel and, uh, or to have a lifestyle of somebody else fix that air conditioner, not me. And these are the, the renter by choice. And we have a special or unique enclave, um, which is really one of my favorite little things. There's very, very small, um, owned cottages. And so, when you come out, you don't really wanna get into an apartment, uh, out of school, you like your own little place, but you want a little community with other people your own age, and we put it here, near, uh, one of the big amenities of these enclaves are to have a community gathering space. So, where we have our pool, uh, clubhouse, is very adjacent to that. So, we've, um, controlled the density through the design, throughout the development, and right now, we have, uh, less than, as Lamont pointed out, less than, uh, 50% of what is allowed. Um, we've designed, uh, for the growth, which is another, uh, tenet of traditional neighborhood design, is how you grow your city or your community, and the best way is by adjacencies. So, we've tried to accommodate that, who we pointed out, by saying, what could go on in the future there, and can it be compatible with what we've done? And we think it's very neighborly to do that. Um, and we, the, the growing by adjacency is a sort of a converse to growing by isolationism, which means the next community, you have to go out of your community, go down the road to go back in to get to that neighbor. This is, is, uh, different than that. Which sort of leads me into buffers. Uh, there was a lot of conversation with buffers in the planning commission meeting, and they, let me give you a slight history on that. They were, um, before cars, you had to live near your factories. It was just, you walked to work. You couldn't, there wasn't a, an alternative there. Once we began to drive to work, then we could create residential neighborhoods apart from factories. So, buffers came in to separate residential neighborhoods from the smoke, noise, uh, all the pollutants, whatever went on with the factory. It was a very good thing. Unfortunately, we started looking at buffers as a way to separate neighbors. Don't know why, but it came about. And that's sort of a, uh, uh, an antithesis to what we are trying to do, which is create community, create neighborliness, and enjoy your neighbors. Um, so, we, uh, would like to be good neighbors, love your neighbor, and get to know our neighbors. Um, now, one, another thing about buffers, and this should, you know, if you've got your hand on the, uh, on the, uh, money register, once that land is given over to a buffer, it's no longer productive forever. It's a non, uh, it's, it's just not part of the tax base. So, what we're doing is ended up paying millions of dollars to segregate neighborhoods. We asked, should we really be paying money to not foster neighborliness, instead of bringing people together? Um, that's, uh, a bit on buffers that are part and parcel to traditional neighborhood philosophies. And ladies and gentlemen, that is how I believe the legacy of Pecosin will embrace this great waterfront community. With that, I will turn it back to Lamont, who hopefully will...
I know it's regaining, sorry to interrupt late, and I know, Mr. Mayor, I have to ask you, do we have time for questions? We'll make sure we do have time for questions. I don't know, Tom, do you want to maybe just spend a minute?
Yeah, I'll be quick, quick. Uh, good evening. My name is Tom Johnston. I am the, uh, chief development officer of the Franklin Johnston Group out of Virginia Beach, who are a mid-size apartment development and management company. Um, Wendell Franklin and I, over the last 30 years, have developed about 35 apartment communities in the mid-Atlantic, comprising about 6,000 apartment units. We currently manage about 10,000 units, some of which for other people, other owners. I have, um, some information about my company and two developments which we've constructed recently, which I think are good indications of what we'd like to do here. Do you mind handing these out?
No, certainly, we'd like to have them.
Oh, that's fine. I just, I'm very curious. It's been a while since Pecosin has had an apartment applicant in front of them. How many people here have been in an apartment community that's been built in the last 10 years? No one? Yep.
Been in or been in?
Uh, been inside apartments. Um, yeah, apartment communities today are very different than they were, the way they were 20 years ago. Um, you know, the so-called apartment complexes of the 70s and 80s, even the 90s, are very different than what we develop today. Brandon mentioned, uh, apartment resident, um, by choice. Many of the apartment communities we build are structured so that, um, we're, we're trying to market to a demographic that really has an economic choice. They can buy a home, or they can rent an apartment, and they choose to rent because it affords them certain things they can't get out of homeownership. I think you all have seen the fairly dramatic shift from homeownership to rentals recently. Part of that was caused by the credit crunch in the mortgage market, but a lot of that also is caused by the younger generation and even act, active seniors wanting someone to take care of their maintenance, wanting someone to, uh, operate the community and be there for them in case something happens. And that's what we're talking about here. Um, this'll be about a $35 million development. Uh, it'll have recreational amenities, much like a resort. It'll have, um, resort-quality pools, clubhouse, uh, athletic facilities. Um, we even have, uh, certain areas that we'd like to have, uh, dog areas. A lot of apartment renters, um, residents have dogs. A lot of them are single, and a lot of them like company and so forth. The others, you know, the apartment units themselves, uh, they're much like custom condominiums today. They have nine-foot ceilings, um, they have hardwood and, um, ceramic floors, granite countertops, stainless steel appliances. They're very large. So, um, these communities are very high-quality. The other very important thing, and I'll be real brief here, to make sure you understand is important, is the management style of the company that ultimately owns and runs this $35 million... this $35 million business. We typically own our communities to hold long-term. We have our own management company. We have very high-quality people managing these. We have very tight policies and procedures. We run very detailed backgrounds, credit backgrounds, on our prospective residents. No one can live here that has any criminal record whatsoever. We even police their dogs. We have what's called doggy DNA, where if somebody moves in with a dog, we have to take a sample, if you know what I mean. And if we find a sample on the ground, we test it, and we find that resident $250 to give back our testing fee. But we also make sure that we have good people that take care of the environment, take care of the surrounding neighborhood, and we'll do a real good job if you rezone this. Thanks. Questions?
Not a zoning thing, but I have one question. Because one of the things that we're trying to make sure that we reinvest in being a city for the military. What's your feedback on, like, military residents? Because right now, it seems like they don't want to own homes.
Very interesting question we have. We work very closely with the military housing offices for a few reasons. One, we want to let them know we're available for them. We want to let them know that we recognize that if they get transferred, that they can have an automatic out of our leases. But you're exactly right. As a matter of fact, most of the branches of the military are recommending their, the people that are transferred to their bases not buy, because when it's time for them to get transferred again, they don't want it to be underwater. So it's very important to the military to have a good, quality rental stock for their people. There's no telling with the ups and downs in the housing market, you know, what can happen. So that's a big part of the market here at this project, I can tell you that much.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead, bud.
Just one. I think it's a really nice project, and I would like to see it happen. One thing that you did talk about was keeping all the drainage water on-site, and it was going to be carefully engineered, that kind of thing. However, I do know of two areas in Pecosin that had really carefully engineered drainage that isn't really, the engineering was great, but it didn't really work. I would like to make certain that that is not the case with this project, that the drainage systems do in fact work, and it's not become a liability either on the homeowners or the citizens of Pecosin, should it have a problem.
Well, that's a good point, Mr. Southall. We agree with you. I'll turn it over to Donald in terms of, you know, how specifically that'll be done. Again, I'm not an engineer, but I do know that the new stormwater regulations especially are so exacting. There was, it was a major sea change in the regulation last July. And as Donald said, they've gone to what's called a runoff reduction method. It's, the whole idea is to keep as much of the stormwater on your site as possible. So we will be directing as much as we can for wetland recharge areas, and we'll have, I imagine we would have to have some bio-retention as well. So the idea with these new regulations is to keep your water on your site. So that is, that's really the watchword now. But Donald, I...
It really is. And we're really now just coming into our own as far as this type of regulation. There's some grandfathering over the years. It could occur on previous sites, but this won't be grandfathered. It'll be completely developed under what we call the 2014 requirements, which went into effect on July 1st of last year. But one of the things also to be careful about is that many times, it works in reverse. The small sites, it's very difficult to develop those, that they might be the two, three, four, five acre range, and you get proper stormwater management, where when you're dealing with a site that's greater than 100 acres, it gives you so much more to work with to be able to not only come up with BMPs that would be maybe wet ponds, dry ponds, bio-retention, rainforests, there are a number of different things that you can use that work so much better today than what they did before. Now, I guess, follow up on that by saying, previously, what we used was a method that was mandated by DEQ at the state level. We're now dealing with our other partner, which is the EPA, and how they're working through those. So this is something that's much newer in its development, and it's going to be something that really, again, keeps your water to yourself.
Any other questions?
No, I've got one overarching question, and Debbie, I know you want to close out. See a lot, a lot of road crossings of Oxford Run there. Is it your intention to cross Oxford Run, was it one, two, three, and possibly four? Or is it four?
Where's the pointer? Brandon, I'll let you...
This one goes around Oxford Run here, so please, I'm seeing them, one, two, and three.
There are four.
Okay. Four. That's fine. Okay, so it is four crossings, but we've now got the bridge, okay? Because I think that's an important, important design element, I know, to the city is if we're going to connect into City Hall Avenue in the circle, that we'd be able to access the neighborhood. Plus, I think it's a community. I appreciate what y'all did to calm the neighborhood in York County. I think generally that was a little on the short-sighted side, because I think that both communities would have thrived with the interconnectivity, but it, you know, it's their choice, and we're fine to facilitate that. So we appreciate what the developer has done there. Unfortunately, I think that will isolate them from the development and from the ease to City Hall and others. So that's, that's the only question. I just wanted to make sure on the four crossings that that was firm in the plan.
Can I add something?
Sure.
Just mostly for those watching at home, to give them context to what the mayor just said. The original design that was put forward by the development team showed a connection where you see that oblong roundabout structure. There was actually a proposed connection through to the Woods of Tab neighborhood on Champions Path. That was removed by the developer at the request of York County and also the representatives of the HOA. So that is one of the reasons why the City Hall access now comes in play much sooner than was originally envisioned, because there's a desire, obviously, to maintain proper access for the whole neighborhood, so.
All right, Debbie.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Last Monday evening, which was May the 18th, the planning commission met in regular session and held two public hearings on this comprehensive land use application. The first public hearing, as I mentioned earlier, was for an amendment to the land use map that's contained in the city's comprehensive plan to incorporate the 22 acres at the southern end of the site into the overall project. That request, a public hearing, as I mentioned, was held. We had a total of eight speakers. That, their comments ranged from the perimeter buffer to traffic and drainage. I believe three of those were Pecosin residents, with five being from York County, from the neighboring Woods of Tab. The planning commission ultimately approved or recommends approval of the land map amendment by a vote of six to zero. Subsequent to that vote, the planning commission moved into the second public hearing, which was the application for the approval of the master plan of development. The public hearing was held, and again, we had several speakers, five in total, with three from Pecosin and two from York County, and their focal points were basically on drainage, the perimeter buffer, and its impact on their neighborhood, and again, traffic. So it was a very consistent deliberation or offering of comments from the adjacent property owners. The planning commission, in their discussion, they also focused on the traffic. And the, the issues for them was, of course, the increase in volume and the filtering of that volume onto Victory Boulevard and the various connection points. They do realize that we are in the process of continuing to reevaluate or to evaluate the traffic studies. The idea that, or there were some issues with the traffic studies not aligning with the legacy's conceptual plan. They were noted by staff, as mentioned this evening by Mr. Myers, and the planning commission understands that there's further evaluation to occur. In addition, please note that VDOT is also performing a review of this plan, not because they're that interested in what's going on in Pecosin, but because of the location of this development to the state-owned lands or state-owned highway in York County, that prompts a VDOT review. They have 45 days to review. The development team actually submitted an application to them the 1st of May, and so we're hoping to get those results back fairly soon. In addition to that, the city of Pecosin has hired a traffic engineer, a consultant, to evaluate the developer's traffic analysis for consistency as well. So we are hoping to receive that analysis back very soon as well, and prior to the, any scheduled public hearing before city council. Couple other issues that were raised by the planning commission included the lack of a connection at Champions Way or Champions Path in York County. We had it on the slide earlier, which basically showed a little star of where that Champions Path connection would be. And as mentioned earlier, the plan was revised from the original version that we received to basically remove that connection based on request by the Woods of Tab neighborhood. Another issue for the planning commission was the configuration or the layout of certain development features, such as clubhouses, swimming pools, and the cottages, and their close proximity to the Woods of Tab neighborhood to the southwest. They were hoping that maybe the development team could look at those a little closer to see if, in fact, without the perimeter buffer, to try to minimize those impacts that those uses might have on this surrounding neighbor. And of course, drainage was an issue. However, the planning commission was observant of the fact that the developer is going to be bound by the 2014 stormwater regulations, and therefore, those items would be addressed by staff during the administrative site plan review stage. And then the final was the planning commission really would like to see some type of pedestrian connection between this development and with Creek Road. With all that said, and that's a lot, the planning commission moved forward with making a recommendation by a vote of six to zero. They are recommending conditional approval of this plan, recognizing that the plan basically needs to abide by the conceptual layout that was provided to them in their review, as well as the architectural renderings. They would like to see that there's a general adherence of those architectural renderings in their, in your final approval of the plan. There was also a notation that, as mentioned earlier, there are some development lots or residential lots that will lie, a portion of them will lie within the resource protection area, which is the resource, yeah, the RPA of the Environmental Management Area Overlay District. And that's because of the title influence of a portion of Oxford Run as it runs in an east-west direction at the southern end of the site. In order to encroach into that RPA on newly-platted lots, it requires a separate review and approval by the Board of Zoning Appeals, and it is not subject actually to any type of approval that city council can grant. So we do realize that there may be some reconfiguration of these lots in the future if that, if the BZA does not approve the plan as submitted. And finally, the traffic mitigation. Again, the planning commission is still concerned about the traffic volumes and the level of service at the various connection points at Victory Boulevard. Again, they are real, they realize that staff is continuing with discussions and evaluation of this traffic flow coming out of this development and coming in, of course, and that they are basically recommending to you guys that if your approval be considered at the time that staff has had an opportunity to fully evaluate, making sure that the level of service is, is acceptable throughout the development as well as at the connection points along Victory Boulevard. And then the final, and it's a little bit more complicated, so please bear with me, it's my last comment, but remember earlier when I was talking about that the developer had requested some variances to the design standards? And those variances were the accessory building setback and the front yard setback along Victory Boulevard, as well as the perimeter buffer along two areas of the site, one adjacent to City Hall and the other adjacent to a portion of the Woods of Tab neighborhood. The planning commission offered absolutely no concerns with the accessory building setback and understand that the nature of the smaller lots kind of controls the need for a lesser setback for accessory structures. However, they were a little bit more reserved about the buffer reduction along Victory Boulevard because of its potential implications with the widening of that street in the future. And then the second was the perimeter buffer as it lies adjacent to the Woods of Tab. There was still concern that the, the commission felt that they would like to see the developer go back and revisit those areas to see if they could increase the buffer areas at those two locations. They had no concerns with a buffer reduction or loss along the residential lots adjacent to City Hall. I hope that was...
I think that was, I think it was pretty concise. I just want to make sure that we're all on one thing. Regarding Victory Boulevard, and maybe I'm incorrect, so correct me if I'm wrong, but any expansion on Victory Boulevard would be to the north, on the other side of the street where the roadbed exists. It wouldn't be to the south where we're talking about. Is that...
The right-of-way is currently located on the north side of the street.
Okay.
Yeah, the state already owns that one.
Right. And the state owns that right-of-way, so it...
These are wagons to the left of that.
That's, that's the way...
Where they're piping the ditch, though, there would be, the access lane.
No, there's, they've actually got a divided highway plan with basically a center median.
But you all were talking about having an access lane covering over the ditch on the south side of the Victory.
Right turn into the side.
That would be, that would be on their property.
Right.
Right.
That would be what would be, all have to be within the right-of-way, Mr. Merritt.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was clear that, I got lost on the Victory Boulevard, that that expansion would be north, so I don't see the thing. And as far as, the one thing I will tell staff, and I'll tell the planning commission, excellent job in, in moving this forward. I won't say that it's going to be approved, because I really don't know. But I will say that everybody's done a great job at doing the reviews. One thing that, that really sticks in my mind right now is that I like the interconnectivity that was being discussed. And future development needs to be targeted to tie into these stub streets. I really don't want standalone neighborhoods. I want neighborhoods to flow. Okay? That's my perspective only, but I mean, if a developer, very much like we ran into on Woods of Tab, the developer really had the foresight to see that connectivity probably should have gone that way. Okay? We need to make sure that future development plans tie into where the planned stub ends are, to the best possible, you know, use. And I'll, I'll give you the example. I brought this up with Randy several times, but we are the backup fire department, right, for York County's neighborhoods there. Okay? And by excluding that street, a simple accident at Victory Boulevard and Yorktown Road and Carriers Chapel can isolate York County's fire services from that neighborhood. The only access that Pecosin has to that neighborhood is either through that same intersection, or through this, or by going all the way around through Hampton, basically, and coming back around. That's why interconnectivity is so important to me, is that it provides that level of service that both of us will enjoy. I appreciate the developer trying to work with them. You know, so it sounds like, then they also are concerned about their setbacks. So it's kind of like, I got it. All right? I just want to make sure that, that everybody understands why, you know, we were saying interconnectivity. It wasn't to penalize neighborhoods, it was basically to bring them together and not isolate them across county, city-county barriers. So, and I look at Village, I mean, I look at Killen Creek is a perfect example of that. Imagine if Killen Creek was divided between Newport News and York County. So keep that in mind as we go forward, but I like the way that they've left the neighborhood open to other developments. open to other developments, and I want to make sure that they're utilized, not new road systems, independent. Okay?
Gene?
Yes, sir.
One, one quick question, the screen's off, but because of the washout of the screen with the lights, it's difficult for me to tell. Into the development, there's a, a parallel road in, in the central part of the development, and then there's the apartment area, and to the west of the apartment area, does that road also go out to Victory Boulevard?
This does go to Victory.
Yeah, right there. Does that also access Victory?
That is a right-in, right-out on Victory.
Okay. I, I wasn't able to tell that from here with the washout.
Yes.
There's 3 entrances.
There'll be 3. This one, the main entrance, and the City Hall here.
Okay.
Three entrances.
Yeah, that's, that's the...
That's the City Hall entrance, so we're connecting there, so that's an entrance. This is the main entrance in the Boulevard, Legacy Boulevard, and then the right-in, right-out.
All right, any other questions? No, we'll all be available if we have individual questions on the circuit.
Yes.
I appreciate your time, appreciate the way that you've gone through this or given the information for full public hearing. We really appreciate that, so that everybody has a basic round of information. Thank you very much for what you've done to move this forward and both staff and both sides. And I guess the decision will be coming next schedule here. That's what it looks like.
Please, Mr. Speaker, if you have a phone here? Candidly, we're planning for a July 27 public hearing. We had originally hoped to be in position to do that in June, however, with the VDOT report coming in and the need for the amended traffic impact analysis that was really set off by the removal of Champions Path, it's just not going to happen. Best-case scenario, we might get it the afternoon here, although that doesn't allow anyone, including any of us, to consider it. So, so we are planning for the July meeting. We have every expectation, and we'll have the information that we need with regard to traffic study in plenty of time.
Now, I will tell you that if it comes to barrier and you need a decision, that I think the council would consider reversing. We're off one meeting in a month in July, right? If we need to reverse and go earlier in July and then cancel the second meeting, if that is, I will offer that up, that is something we could consider that will come today. Just make sure the reports come, and then certainly something that we will need to do by June.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.